This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Selectment meeting, our June Board of Selectment meeting. I'm Mike Fried, North Haven's first selectman, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda, any public comments to the actual agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll ask for the approval of the minutes, item number three of the Board of Selectment meeting on May 5th.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from our Board of Selectment meeting of May 5th, 2022.
I'll second Sally's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Item number four, I do not have any slides tonight, ladies and gentlemen, but there's three topics that I'd like to speak about. Number one, with the tragedy that we all witnessed in Texas, I have gotten a lot of phone calls, emails, and I've had other towns reach out for me. And the towns that have reached out for me want to know if I can get together with them to talk about our SRO program in the school system. I've had many residents who have called to thank us, me, for putting the program together. And I wanted everyone to know that school security is of paramount importance to all of us, this administration and everybody. So I'll be meeting with a couple of towns who've asked to see me because they don't have SROs in many of their schools. And now, of course, with these tragedies that are happening, there's a growing movement for more school security. So we not only have the SRO program, there are certified police officers, and they're armed in the school system. The children love them, the faculty feels very safe, and the administrators and the principals in the elementary schools and the middle school and the high school support the program tremendously. We also, as a reminder, because some people, and this is why I'm mentioning this, some people didn't realize that we also invested a couple of years ago in a $2 million program to support the Board of Education in a bonding package to increase the security in every single school. And that includes the elementary schools with key cards, cameras, video surveillance. As an example, if tonight, myself, if that school was open, let's say Clintonville School, and Bill, myself, and Sally went in there, went there, and the school was in session, we could not get in. I was there last week for a retirement. There's very strict security protocols. So apparently what's happening is now we've gotten some notice from other cities and towns who want to know how we did this. So I'll be meeting with the cities and towns, and I want the residents to know this, that despite what we've done, we, and myself in particular, working with the superintendent, we are looking to see and to monitor and to examine what other potential vulnerabilities may exist. And my goal will be to shore any of those up if we find out there are additional vulnerabilities. So thank you for listening to that. Secondly, we have two problems in town right now, both of which we've previously spoken about. One is tremendous littering all over town. And just so everyone knows, that I have spent, on behalf of the town, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to have public works go out on litter patrols. There are streets where we will send a public works crew, and they'll spend two hours there, two or three people. And then the next day, it looks like they were never there. So recently, the garden club reached out for me because they do a great job, and I support them 100%. And they reached out for me because they're noticing litter around town, too. And that's a group that puts so much into the town, donating their time to make sure that the islands, at the intersections, everything over here on Broadway, flower pots, everything is done immaculately. I support them so much that I took them off the major streets when they were watering, and now I have public works doing the watering for them for their own safety. So we need your help. That, I don't understand why someone would be driving in a car and throwing out a lunch bag, let's say, from a fast food restaurant on the streets of North Haven, but that's what's happening here. And so we need your help because when we have that excessive littering, it not only makes the town look very bad, the optics are not good, but there's an allocation of resources that the town has to supply that takes the Public Works Department from doing other things that they really should be doing. So I need your help, ladies and gentlemen. Littering is truly a problem in town. And speeding, and this is not just here in North Haven, it's everywhere. Our police are having a difficult time keeping up with the speeding. Over the weekend, I was on I-91, and there were these motorcycles traveling at least 120 miles an hour doing wheelies in the center lane. I have no idea why people would even consider doing that. But we're seeing it on our streets, we're seeing it on the main roads, and we're seeing it also in some of the side streets. And sadly, I'll give you an example. A few years ago, somebody called me, had gotten a speeding ticket on one of our streets. And the speeding ticket was $273. And they talked to the police, and the police enforced the speeding, 72 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. So the person called me and wanted to know if I'd fix the ticket. Now, as North Haven's chief elected official, that's not something that I would ever even consider. So during the conversation, I asked the person, "How fast were you going, 72 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone?" They were pleading with me, they couldn't pay the ticket. Now, prior to that, this office had about 17 calls from the residents on that street complaining about speeding on that street. So as I explained to the person who called me, I'm the person that asked the police chiefs to put radar on the street. And as it turned out, it was that person who was speeding that the neighbors were complaining about. So I want to share with you a tip that I utilize myself, because I'm no different than anyone else here. Many times, we may not realize that we're going faster than what the speed limit is. So I myself have disciplined myself, while I'm driving, to glance down on my car, I have converted, or I've put in the actual number rather than the dial, so to speak. So if I'm going 35 miles an hour, 38 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone, I see that display. So I discipline myself to watch that to slow down. So if I can ask you to consider, while you're driving, notice your speed because it really is getting to be unmanageable here in the town of North Haven. So I need your help, ladies and gentlemen. I need your help because the reckless and speeding driving is going to cause bad consequences. We're seeing it all over the state. Yesterday, I was at a statewide mayor's meeting, and the mayors were talking about this. And then, for those of us who are animal lovers, there are pets who are roaming, and they're getting hit in the streets with car speeding. One of the mayors called me the other day, who I'm friendly with, he was distraught. One of his neighbors, the dog roamed loose and was hit by a car in that particular city, and the car was speeding. So I'm pleading with you, ladies and gentlemen, I need your help on this, the littering and the speeding. Sally and Bill, anything?
No, I, we certainly agree and hopeful, are hopeful that people will abide by your requests about littering. We've talked about this before.
Yep.
I think, and I've said before, that I think that with so many drive-through, we've always had fast food, but the drive-through, the past 30 years or however long it's been, has really caused an increase in littering because you ask, "Why are people throwing bags out the window from a fast food place?" Because they're eating in their car more than they did many years ago. So I second your pleas to the folks to cut down on littering. And speeding is always going to be a problem, and that's all we could do is hope that people will learn from getting tickets or seeing accident scenes or whatever to try to slow it down. But you're right, it creeps up on all of us. We just have to be more aware. So I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I mean, when I go and walk, I pick up, I try to pick up trash regularly, including, I'll find, like, in the road, like, road debris, like nails, metal, things like that, it'll get people's tires.
Is Mike's on?
My mic not working?
The other one, the other one.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be, every morning I pick up, you know, some days I'll pick up 10, 12 cigarette butts in my front yard. You know, because my yard, my, my yard is a, my road is a cutthroat in terms of people cutting through to different locations. And when my kids were, you know, which is, you know, I never let my kids play in the front yard because I was always concerned about people's feet, you know, even going back, you know, 10, 20, 25 years ago. You know, I think people just don't pay attention sometimes to the rules, you know? And I think that's the most important thing is that not only are there pets out there, but there are children, there are people walking, there are people exercising. You know, and we've had, over the years, there's had been, there have been some tragic results where, you know, where children have been, children have been killed, you know, in North Haven because people have not paid attention to, you know, to their speed or what they were doing, or, you know, some combination of, you know, even the person walking maybe not paying attention, but, you know, you don't, I don't think people do these things intentionally, but on the other hand, you don't want to be part of a, you know, I think most people are good, they really don't want to have a bad result, but, and you definitely don't want to have a situation where because you're speeding, you're inattentive, you're on your phone, you're not paying attention, you know, you're littering, whatever you may be doing, and then somebody gets hurt or killed in the process. So I think, you know, and then that, you know, then that's not what we, not what we want in terms of our community and what people need to do to support each other and take care of each other in our community. But I, you know, glad you brought these two issues up because, you know, I think it's always been a problem, but it's gotten worse.
Okay. And lastly, on Monday night, June 6th, we have a town meeting at the high school to talk about the athletic improvement initiative that I'm trying to bring forward with a bonding package of 3.5 million. So that will be 7 o'clock ballot to high school?
Correct, yes.
Very good, okay. All right, I will turn the meeting over to Sally and Bill on the appointments and the resignations. Sally, you want to start?
Sure. I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Alden Mead, 200 Remmon Road, from the Cable Advisory Council of South Central Connecticut, term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second Alden's resignation.
All right. We think Alden is great, it was his preference to resign from this, and you'll see a little bit later what, what we'll be doing here to vote Alden in another board. But we have a motion and we have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. All right, Bill?
I'll make a motion regarding the resignation, to accept the resignation of Jennifer D. Chicorelli, 396 Quinnipiac Avenue, from the Board of Education, term to expire November 30th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion.
Yes, I'll second it. There is a very poignant letter in our packet from Jennifer, and I certainly, on behalf of the board, would like to thank her for nine years of service on the Board of Education, one of our most time-consuming boards. As far as the hours that they put in, they have subcommittees, they have late meetings. It's, I used to tease that the six-year, the six years that they're elected for is in a term, it's a sentence. And so we are very thankful for Jennifer's nine years of service. So I will second her, the motion for to accept her resignation.
I totally agree with your assessment. Jen has served so faithfully for nine years. She's an outstanding lady who has poured everything that she possibly could into sitting on that board. I had the pleasure and honor of having her daughter Charlotte here a few years ago because I conducted an AP government class in conjunction with the history department at the high school, where every year I'd have students come in, and Charlotte was one of them. And I was so impressed with Charlotte, and I'm glad she's doing well today. So thank you very much, Jennifer, for your service. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. I will do the next one in accordance with our obligations to fill a, a elected position within promptly. I am very happy and proud to make a motion to appoint for the appointment of Tais G. Moore, 550 Clintonville Road, to the Board of Education to fill the unexpired term of Jennifer D. Chicorelli, term to expire November 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, that appointment.
Well, I'm absolutely delighted with this appointment, and we had a very nice conversation, and I won't disclose the nature of it, but that is something that is my commitment to you. You always can call on me for what we spoke about in that conversation. So Tais, thank you very much. I appreciate your serving. At a time when it's very difficult on Boards of Eds across the state, your willingness to step up and sit is a great, is great for me to see, so I thank you.
And I would just like to add that we all reviewed her resume, that's in our packet, and a very impressive resume it is. And we welcome you to our local government, and I hope that you enjoy your time on the Board of Education. As I said, it's one of the busiest boards and commissions that we have, and so we wish you luck. And there's lots of folks on, sitting on either side of you that will help you along, I'm sure. So welcome and good luck.
Thank you, Tais. So we're going to call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Tais. All right, so we'll move to Mr. Piper for the next appointment.
As Mike said earlier, in spite of his resignation from the Cable Advisory Committee, I'll make a motion to appoint Alden Mead, 200 Remmon Road, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board as an alternative for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. In discussion, I'd like to thank Alden. I happened to speak with him last weekend. This is another board, ladies and gentlemen, that's not easy to sit on because your, the board deals with complaints against neighbors on blighted issues, and it takes a great deal of patience and discipline with demonstrating no emotion as the board reviews some of these blight complaints. So I think Alden definitely fits that bill, and I support Alden 100%. We'll call for that vote.
Yes, we should also mention Alden, a very dedicated citizen, is on our police commission as well.
That's right.
So likewise, I support this appointment.
Okay, call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I will move for the appointment of Kenneth Quick, 5 Hamilton Court, to the Cable Advisory Council of South Central Connecticut, to fill the unexpired term of Alden Mead. Alden's getting a lot of print in our agenda tonight. The unexpired term of Alden Mead, term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second the appointment of Kenneth to the Advisory, Cable Advisory Council.
Okay. Ken, I'd like to thank you for stepping up, and occasionally we communicate on Facebook together, so thank you for stepping up on this, we appreciate it. We'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
I'll make a motion to, for the appointment of Lois Baldini, 10 Heritage Hill Road, to the Board of Ethics, term to expire December 31st, 2024.
Second.
All right, in discussion, I want to explain this, that right now, the Board of Ethics, there was an ordinance put in in about 2008. Right now, we only have two members on the Board of Ethics. One is affiliated as a D, the other is affiliated as a U. And Lois has agreed to step up to sit on this board, which now gives us a quorum. So the composition of the quorum is one R, one D, and one U. There is a total of five slots on this, so we need two U's, two unaffiliated voters to have the majority on the board with one Republican, one Democrat. And so we're still looking for two more. And what, right now, we do and will have a quorum, so, so that is what I wanted to mention in discussion. We'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. All right, next.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of James H. Iovino, 600 Washington Avenue, Unit F4, to the Blight Prevention Appeals Board for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second the reappointment.
All right, motion and a second. In discussion, I'd like to thank Jim. He's been on this commission for quite some time. It's not easy. Thank you, James. We'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Next.
Next on the, is a, a motion for the reappointment of James D. Nesdale, 22 Mansfield Road, to Blight Prevention Appeals Board for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. I'd like to thank Jim also. He sat on this commission for quite some time, and we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of Lynn Frederickson, 95 Pool Road, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Lynn, thank you for agreeing to continue to do this. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Next.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of James Redman, 47 Pool Road, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All right, thank you, Jim. I know this is kind of a passion of yours, so I appreciate your willingness to continue. All those in favor? Aye.
And finally, I will make a motion for the reappointment of Martin Rednick, 128 Summer Lane, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Marty, for continuing. All those in favor? Aye. Next.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the 2023 Board of Selectment meeting dates, which will take place in the upstairs conference room, number one, of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, at 6:30 PM, which are the, I think, the first Thursday of every month for 2023, January 5th, February 2nd, March 2nd, April 6th, March 4th, June 4th, July 6th, August 3rd, September 7th, October 5th, November 2nd, and December 7th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll, I'll second that approval.
And as always, Sally and Bill, if something happens where you have a schedule conflict, just let me know, we'll work around it, and we'll be flexible as always, so. All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
And I think 6:30 has worked out okay, that we've done it this year, going from 7. I don't think that's created any problems for anything, and hopefully it's helped other people come to the, come to the meetings.
Sally?
Yeah, I'll do 7 and 8, the senior bus. First, we have to consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the sale and disposal of the Senior Center Service Bus 1, which was inspected in June of 2021 and was determined to have met its life use structure unsafe. Oh, okay, got it. It was, it's no good. That's what this says, I think.
Yes, yeah, so, before you get into 8, Sally, item 8, which is a continuation.
The resolution, yes.
So just let me explain. So what we've done since I've taken office is we examine the fleet, all different areas, and those that are being transferred out as we bring new vehicles in, we go out to auction. We've gotten anywhere from $3,000 to $7,000 on some of these vehicles, and put the money in the general fund. And as part of what we're doing with, for the seniors, we're buying two new senior buses. So this money, whatever we get, will go back into the general fund. So Sally, number 8.
Yeah, so, resolved, I'll make a motion that we resolve that the town of North Haven authorize the auction and disposal of the 2008 Ford Senior Center Service Bus 1, VIN number 1FD4E45S28DB60272. The Director of Field Operations, Mike Maturro, is authorized to determine acceptable bid offers and/or take said vehicle to alternate auction locations. All revenue received will return to the North Haven General Fund.
Okay.
So I will make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All right, if I describe what we're trying to accomplish here, so all those in favor? Aye.
Are we buying a, is this, a Senior Center Service Bus on that list of capital items that ARPA, we're going to replace it with ARPA funds, are we not?
We are, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay, item number nine.
Looks like we got good use out of this bus.
Yes.
Yeah, and we need, we need to replace it because, excuse me, Bill, a lot of our seniors depend on those vehicles to get to important appointments. I've had clients of mine come to my office in the senior bus, so I know that it is, serves an important function for our elderly citizens who are unable to get about town to make certain appointments. So I'm glad we're replacing it.
You are 100% correct. Just the other night in the concert on the Green, I was going through the crowd, talking to people, our first concert of the summer, and I ran into a few seniors, and it has a very adverse effect on their daily activities when buses are down because they, as you said, Sally, they depend so much on the transportation. And it's not only things like grocery shopping, it's medical appointments also. That's why I want to get these two buses.
Illegal appointments, but yes, medical appointments primarily. And some, some folks get quite panicky if, you know, and I understand because you have to go to the doctor. So I'm glad that we're replacing it, and it is an appropriate use of ARPA funding.
Okay, property tax refunds.
The, I think as we do every meeting, there are a few small property tax refunds. I'll make a motion to, none of which are unusual or a significant amount. I'll make a motion to approve these property tax refunds.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, and the other discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. All right, item number 10, the next regular meeting of this Board of Selectment will be Thursday, July 7th, here at 6:30 upstairs in the conference room of North Haven Memorial Town Hall. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we're at the point of public comment. Get your cats.
So, serving cats, 40 Sherwood Drive, 40, 54 years. About this letter that you brought up, I was in Bishop, Virginia a few years ago, and I was there on business, and I was talking to someone about how clean their city was. You couldn't find a speck of paper anywhere. And the way he put to me was, if red, if you see someone throw something out of the window of the car, take the license number and call the police, and they react to that. I don't know if we could do it legally here, but it's an idea.
It's an idea. I agree, Sherm. Val, they can note that, okay, and see if we can do that.
The other thing about the schools, you really have to impress on the employees at the school how dangerous it is to circumvent the various safety things. When I was on a school van, I saw them wedge a door open at Greenacre School so they could go back and forth without having to ring a bell. They go out to smoke, delivery man would come. And I brought it to the attention of the officials there, and they weren't too excited about it, but the, the police officer was. They, they finally did something about that.
Good, Sherm, good.
But they have to be told in a very strong way that there's rules there for a very good reason. All right, I have a question about the racket club. Who owns the racket club now?
We do.
We do. Did we have to buy it from Tagletella?
No, no, they gifted it to us.
They gifted it to us.
Here's the way it went. So originally, they wanted to gift it to Tennis For All, who's in there. We, as you know, have owned the land for years.
Yeah.
So we were being paid a, a ground lease. So during the negotiations, the intention was to So during the negotiations, the intention was to gift it to the TFA, a TFA, but for some reason, it never happened. So they gifted it to us. And we have inherited the contract of the operator, Tennis For All. So the way it would work is when that contract is up, it'll go out to bid, and they're paying us taxes and a ground lease for that.
Are, we are getting property taxes on the building?
Yes.
Even though the town owns it?
They're paying the taxes, yes. Well, it's, it's a combination, Sherman, of a tax slash lease. There's a, there's a lump sum, it's, it's classified under both, so.
Okay.
So we weren't getting anything, you know, during COVID, it had shut down, so now we're back on track. But this is not a business I really want to be in, to be honest with you.
The town isn't in business to be business. That's, that's not a good thing. Well, I got that set.
If I remember correctly, the amount of tax that we would have received on the building is built in as part of the rent.
Yes.
Isn't that?
Exactly.
Right.
So we're, we're not losing any, any funds in this thing?
My, my concern was.
We're not supporting it financially, correct?
No, no. But I, I had my concerns, as you recall, with the lease, with some liability issues, but, you know, and, and town councils seemed to think those were addressed satisfactorily with insurance requirements. But, so that's, so I, I don't, there's no loss of, of, of revenue, as far as tax revenue.
I'll get into some touchy areas now. Would you explain the bidding procedure in this town? We have a, a threshold where you have to send out for bid and, or, or you don't have to? And could you just explain that quickly?
Well, it's $25,000, and anything under that, we get three requests for proposals.
$25,000?
Yes.
Okay. At the last Board of Finance meeting, there was a request for $34,000, $34-plus thousand dollars.
Yep.
To buy a bed for a, a truck, a stainless steel bed, which I have no problem with. Mr. Monaco asked if this was a one-source-only item, and the answer was yes. I went on the internet for five minutes, and I found a number of other companies that do this. So now you don't know that you're getting the lowest price and the best product, because it did not go out to bid. And I think that the bid process was circumvented, and I think it should be looked at very carefully, because I, I'm, in my mind, and I'm not a lawyer, the law, the, the rules of the town were broken, and someone, someone should pay for it.
Well, actually, we're, we're going to be scrapping the whole thing, so in the August Board of Finance meeting, I'll be updating everybody. So when we look, when you say one source, Sherman, if it's on the state contract or state bidders, okay? There's other bidders on the state list, okay? So we pick who is the lowest bidder off of the one source, which is the state contract. It's not to be construed that we're obviating the bid process system, so.
But I, I proved that the state bid list is not the best list to use. There are people on the, they, they get onto the bid list, and then when they do a job, they can charge anything they want. All that, all that list is their preferred bidder.
So we're scrapping it, and I'll update everybody in August, okay?
I'm very disappointed at the turnout of the vote, as you are. I've been here 54 years, and every year it seems to get lower and lower. People in this town don't seem to want to go out and exercise their, their, not just their right, but their obligation to vote. If you go back 30, 40 years, you'll find there are thousands of people that voted all the time. This room would be full all the time. Our town meetings would be full to, they'd be out in the hallway. The people in this town are not running the town anymore. It's a handful of people that are running the town. They should be getting out there to vote. A number of years ago, there was a person who wanted to turn this into a different form of government, like a city like Camden or New Haven, and there was a pushback on that, and for a good reason, because we want to be involved. I mean, these people are here, they want to be involved in this. So I urge people to get out and exercise their right, help run the town.
You just gave a good public service announcement, Sherman. We, we agree with you.
Now, 27% of the votes were no, and 73% were yes. I've had several phone calls from people that told me that as employees of the town, Police Department, Fire Department, Ed, Board of Education, they were asked strongly to vote yes on the contract, so that they wouldn't lose anything and it would be passed. It's, this is, you have free speech in this town, in this world, in this, this country, and I, I don't have a problem with someone requesting, but not really strongly. I don't think that's a, I don't think it's right. And I think that's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good, Sherman. Any other comments? This is Barrett.
Sherman, thanks for saying something about the school, you know, where you noticed the violations and security. I think more people need to do that. You know, if you see something, you know, yeah, it's unsafe, and, you know, you know, a good example of what happened in Texas, you know, 99, you know, 90, 99,000 times it's not an issue, one time it is, when this was, that's what happened, you know, in Texas. But you did the right thing when you.
They left the door.
You know, in order to wear school, somebody did the same thing, and you brought it to the attention of the SRO. So thank you for doing that.
Mr. Barrett?
Nancy Barrett, 1 Crestview Drive. I just have a couple of comments to make. Mr. Frieder raised the issue at the very beginning about within the context of the tragedies in the last week, gun violence, talking about, I think he referred to it as the SRO program. So I, I just want to clarify that we have a supernumerary program. So in the past, we had one school resource officer who was a full-time, salaried, unionized police officer at the high school. And then there was a recommendation this year to remove that SRO and have him return to the police department in a different capacity. And now the recommendation from the police chief was to add a second supernumerary at the high school. And again, the program, as we memorialized it in our town, is called the supernumerary program, and the distinction is that the supernumeraries are retired police officers, still, you know, considered a portion of the, the police department, but they are not salaried, they're hourly employees, they're only paid when school is in session, and they are not unionized, nor do they receive any benefits from the town. So I just wanted to make that distinction. They are vital and, and very well-respected and, and certainly appreciated by both the staff and the students, but I just wanted to make that distinction. As far as littering, I, I live on, you know, just off of busy Skiff Street, and I, I go out on a regular basis with a giant garbage bag, and I'm picking up trash that's, that people just throw out their window.
Your corner, your corner is really, is one of the primaries.
Absolutely.
It really is, so.
And it's, it's very sad, but I certainly try to do my part and, and clean up as much as I can. So I, I just had one sort of clarifying question, and again, I don't know the answer to this at all, but I thought I'd just raise it. As much as I liken, respect Alden Mead, this has nothing to do with him as a person, but I just wondered, is there any conflict of interest in having someone serve both on the police commission as well as on the Blight Prevention Appeals Committee? Just because there might be some cases that could escalate.
So I don't.
Interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think so, and I'll tell you why, because there's never been an instance where the police officers have gone out to enforce a blight here.
Oh, okay. That was my concern.
So the way it works, ladies and gentlemen, and those watching, to Mrs. Barrett's question, so there's a commission that hears every complaint, but before they hear the complaint, our blight officer goes out to work with the resident who is the victim of the complaint, to say, this is what we think you need to do, we'll give you 30 or 60 days to do it. And if that person doesn't do it, the blight officer goes back out again and gives them another 30 days. And then at that point, if there's nothing done, it goes to the commission. And the commission then is the enforcement agency, and they will fine a resident $100 a day. They have that statutory ability. So there's never an instance, Nancy, where police go out and enforce it.
I see. So, so then there wouldn't be a case after the commission gets involved that the police have to further take it to another level?
It's never happened. Now, of course, there have been instances where residents have threatened to call the police on certain issues, but we try to redirect that back to the process, so.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
I, I think that's a good point, though. And when you say blight officer, you don't mean a police officer, you mean the blight. I just want.
Tom, boy, yeah.
It's not, you know, people hear officer, they may think. But because fines are possible, I can understand the nature of the question, but I'd have to re, re, take another look at that, that blight ordinance. I don't think, it does have that $100 a day fine, and I, I, I'd have to check, I, I have vague recollection, so that's my disclaimer, that there might be some lien rights that the town might have, if that piles up.
Yes.
But I don't think it had criminal elements to it, but I think it's an interesting question, you know, question.
So to further.
I don't think you can get arrested for blight.
No, no. But there is a fine, by fine, I mean paying of a fine, not fine nice. There is a fine element in our blight ordinance, so I think that's, that's probably why Mrs. Barrett asked a very meritorious question.
On the fine aspect, Sally?
Yes.
The town has collected blight fees that were fines that accumulated. So there's a street in North Haven, and it was a house that raccoons were living in. And the house had been vacant for years. So I went out there and met with the residents, and it was a legitimate complaint. We got the blight officer involved, and it was so bad that when I was standing on the front lawn, there was a raccoon looking out four different windows, four different raccoons.
Oh, cute.
So.
Were they Republican?
That's right, he was campaigning.
So anyway, to make a long story short, the, someone wanted to buy the house, which was great for us, because they were going to tear it down, and I had the neighbors out there, and the neighbors were thankful for my efforts in trying to facilitate that. And so the person, the company who bought it, they had to pay about $26,000 in blight fees back to the town.
Yeah.
So, so we've, it's been a, look, there's no question, it's added more cost to the town, whether they be attorney fees or whatever.
Right.
But we have recouped the blight fee fines, so there's some sort of reimbursement.
So, so the enforcement or the collection of the fines is done through legal pathways as opposed to through the police?
Police are not involved with that at all.
That's my question.
And I don't, you don't get a criminal record for paying that fine. Normally, if you pay a fine.
Right.
You, you know, with a criminal charge, you have a record, but there's no criminal record. So back to your question about a possible conflict with Alden Mead, as a, I.
That clarifies it.
I don't think so, but it's a, it's an interesting question.
I don't see it.
Was that buyer named Rocky by any of you?
Now, look.
Showing my, my Beatles.
But a bunch.
I, I, I'm saying this in what may appear to be a very, very demonstrative fashion, that I don't see it, but if I'm wrong, if you want to do the research, let me know.
I'll just give it a quick, I, I, I think it's an interesting question, but I, I don't think there is a criminal element at the end of the road, and it's a long road. I mean, people have every opportunity, I know that for a fact, on blight, to remedy the situation.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah.
It's, it's a long road before the fines are even invoked, so, which is a good thing, because some people don't have the means sometimes.
Yep.
And, and, so it's a long road, and lots, sometimes the, they get help.
So right around the corner from Mrs. Barrett's house, there's at, at least a five-year blight issue going on over there. And it's got so bad, residents have moved out because of it. And now, because they start the process, they stop, they pull permits, they stop, we're taking a very, very firm position on this to get this thing cleaned up. It's a beautiful area, that area.
It is, yes. I know exactly which house you're talking about.
But it, you know, it, it's a long road, there's, it's very fair, I think, in that it gives citizens who have been, who have received the blight citation, a great deal of opportunity.
Yeah, you're right.
To explain and to remedy the situation. And sometimes help from different sources is available, so we don't want anyone to get nervous if, you know, there's always accommodations, as you said, five years. I mean, we, 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 the purpose of the blight is to clean up properties. We don't want to fine people. We want them, the properties cleaned up. That was the motivation for the blight ordinance. Geez, that had to be about 15 or 16 years ago now.
No, because it.
No, not that.
Because I introduced it when I was in office, so I'd say it's about seven or eight years ago.
Blight?
Blight, yes.
Oh, I thought it went back much further than that.
Right.
Okay, my mistake.
So that's how it happened.
Oh, all right.
Mrs. Barrett?
Okay, I, I just have two more points.
We may have to redefine what we mean by blight, because we now have no, no mow-may.
No mow-may, yeah, with that, that eight-inch or 10-inch grass length, that's right, no mow-may.
To let the, your lawn scrub just because.
For the bees, right?
Yeah, because it is healthy, I mean, sometimes mowing does the, yeah, in terms of bees and, and other pollinators, I think like that.
Yeah.
You know, so there's an argument maybe not to mow the mower, to mow the tree.
I missed that memo, I guess it's too late now.
Yeah, there's, no, no mow-may.
No mow-may. Mrs. Barrett, continue.
Okay, so I just have two more points. So one relates to the, the budget for the next fiscal year that was just approved at the referendum. So this is the budget for 2022, 23. I believe during our discussions about this, there was a mention of $300,000 for two fire trucks that have been ordered, and I believe the discussions included these, this particular fee, which would be an annual fee for the, for the two trucks for several years out, that would be covered by ARPA. But in listening to the most recent fire commission meeting, the fire chief confirmed last month that because we would not be actually taking possession of those trucks next year, there wouldn't be any payments. So I think that actually results in a savings of $300,000 of ARPA, and so rather than $1.1 million expended in ARPA next fiscal year, I think we're only spending $800,000. Is that true?
Yeah, that, that conceptually is true. What, what's happening with the supply chain backups, these vehicles aren't, aren't ready, public works trucks are out two years, fire trucks are out two years, so that's exactly right. So as far as $800,000, I'd have to check on that, but we're in a situation now, I've got to pare back the ARPA, because we're over encumbered by about $900,000. I got to cut back on some projects that I planned.
Oh, dear.
Because of the inflationary aspect of what's going on.
Hmm.
So.
Right. I think the, Mrs. Barrett came to the $800,000, because it was originally $1.1 million. There was a, a list of about, I think it was 11 items.
Yep.
That were taken out of the initial capital budget, and were taken out of the capital budget and earmarked for $1.1 million of ARPA, and one of them was the $300,000 payment.
Oh, I thought you were referring to the truck being 1.2. Okay.
Oh, no, no, no. The total was 1.1 million.
So what she's saying is now that the $300,000 isn't being spent, that, that $1.1 million of ARPA, so there, now you, you just made $300,000 of the 900, you're short.
So now, now you have, you found it, right, an additional $300,000.
It's so odd, because now that we've got all the funding, we can't get the, the equipment. Everything's packed up?
Right. Okay, and then the last point is, we really haven't heard too much in any of the first electments update about COVID in our town. And as we all know, there are still many cases, infections, hospitalizations, and sadly deaths due to COVID in our state, in our, in our county of New Haven, as well as in our town. There was a big spike, as we all know, back in January, and then a smaller, but still pretty significant spike in May. So I'm just wondering what, what, if anything, you can, any shed, any light you can shed on this, as well as, it, it seemed like there really wasn't any change in policy in each, either of those months, either in May or in, in January, in terms of mask wearing in, in public buildings or anything like that.
Yes, we have masks optional in our buildings right now. And as an example, my conference room, if I have four or more people, we end up wearing masks. So as far as the numbers, what's happening is, and I'll be more than happy to update everyone at the next meeting, what we're seeing is although this might be, let's say, a fourteen percent positivity rate, the symptoms have greatly subsided. As an example, last week, we had to close the first floor here. Everybody had COVID.
Ooh, I didn't know that.
But, but there were no symptoms. They all felt great. But, so they, but because we practice and comply with the CDC guidelines, they had to stay out, quarantined, but they had no sickness at all, no coughs, they just tested positive.
Tested positive.
So, you know, I think it's a balancing act, Nancy, not to raise alarms because, you know, most people in North Haven are vaccinated, and the symptoms when you get, when they have gotten it, and the last week downstairs was a good example, they all felt great. But I couldn't have him, them here at town hall.
No, absolutely not.
So. The difference, I think, between what we're seeing today and two years ago during this time, the, the insidious effects of the infections themselves were debilitating in many cases to people. Now, what we're seeing is, again, worst-case symptoms that I've been told, like a common cold, for those that test positive. So I don't want to raise alarms, I'll be more than happy to update everybody at the next meeting, but if last week was an example, everybody was out and nobody had any, any symptoms, they all felt good.
I'm, I'm very glad to hear about those particular cases, but those anecdotes, while they certainly were accurate for those individuals, don't necessarily extrapolate to everyone in the population. As I mentioned, there are still people that are being hospitalized with COVID, there are still people dying from COVID in our, in our state, in our country. And so I, I think we really shouldn't try to, in any way, trivialize the potential for this infection to still be catastrophic.
So what we're doing is, we're certainly not trivializing it, but we're not, we're not creating panic either.
Yep.
So as an example, the other night on the Concert of the Green, we were passing out test kits for people, reminding them to keep testing. But this isn't something I'm broadcasting every time we're up here. We, we're practicing the protocols, and we have extra kits left over, we purchased from ARPA. So, and you should have seen the people on the green, hey, thank you, Mr. Frieda, thanks for these kits, this is great. So we are still doing our part.
Mm-hmm.
But we're not calling heightened level attention to something.
I'm not trying to panic anyone, but for example, Fourth of July is right around the corner. So I would encourage everyone who is planning picnics and gatherings prior to getting big groups of people together, everyone should be doing these over-the-counter tests, just to make sure that, you know, you really can gather and enjoy yourselves.
Yeah, I agree with that, I do.
I just wanted to make that point.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, okay. Any other comments? No? All right, Mr. Katz.
Yeah, just, I just have one more thing to say. This comes back many years. I hope you're aware that the Board of Education is supposed to reimburse the Fleech Department a hundred thousand dollars a year for the SRO. Do you remember that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, do you know if it's being done?
No, I don't.
We have a new chief, and he may not know it.
Right.
If you have any questions, ask Joe Derico.
You see Joe down in recycling at Ben, right?
Well, once in a blue moon. But no, that was a, he was very upset because they forgot to charge the Board of Ed for a couple of years.
Can I share something with you, Sherman?
Yeah.
Regarding your street? If you don't mind, if you hope you don't mind me bringing you up to speed.
No, go ahead.
Okay, because I know you've been talking to the engineer, okay? So you know I've committed to correct the problems there. But you, and you know you just got a letter from the RWA, right?
Yep.
I met with the RWA today. That's going to be a seven or eight, eight-week project for them to complete that. This is what they told me today.
Yep.
Now, here we are, June 1st, June, July, eight weeks, okay?
When they, after they start, eight weeks.
Right.
We don't know when they start.
Let's say six to eight weeks, okay? Now, and I want to make, be clear, because we've known each other for all these years, and I made this commitment to you. But on now, what I'm seeing is on outsourcing projects, like that big pipe to correct that drainage issue there, we're not going to be doing that, and everybody's backed up, meaning the contractors. So if the RWA is going to take six to eight weeks, and it's going to take another four weeks to even start that project there, you know where I'm going with this, right?
Yeah, I know where you're going.
However, that will not, that will not mean that I'm not continuing to make the commitment on the paving there. But you're a smart gentleman, you know that we can't pave a road and then tear it up later.
Can't. It's foolish to do that.
Yes. So I just wanted to give you an update. Andy and I, we have the cards that were dealt with, and we've got to make sure, because that RWA project, Sherman, is so important to that street. And the good news is, because of our relationship with them, they fast-tracked that to start it this summer.
You told me about that, right?
Right. Because if that didn't happen, and we went through what we committed to you, it would have been torn up sometime twelve to eighteen months from now.
Was it our five years, then originally it was five years?
Yes. So I just wanted to fill you in, I hope you don't mind, but you know, I know it's an important issue.
Look, we went through this last year, we talked about it, we worked it out.
We did, yes.
So.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Sherman, thank you. Okay. All right.
Before we adjourn, can I just have the floor for just a couple of minutes? Mostly because something that I, I heard on a news broadcast yesterday. But it, it has to do with some of the comments that you made in your overview, you know, you've been getting calls from people concerned about the mass shootings and, you know.
And thank you calls, too.
And thank you calls for our supernumerary program that was put into effect at a very well-attended town meeting, I believe it was June 25th, 2018. And lots of folks spoke in favor of the supernumerary program, myself included, mentioning, of course, Sandy Hook, and, and who in Connecticut did not think about Sandy Hook with this last school shooting in, in Texas.
And some spoke against it that night.
Yes, a few spoke against it. But, but the town made a commitment to school security through the supernumerary program, and I'm glad that other municipalities are reaching out to you and are showing interest in that. But the, the thing that I, you know, we, we had the tragic Buffalo shooting of ten, ten of our citizens who were just shopping in a store, and that was a racially motivated event. And then, of course, two weeks later, the, the shooting in Texas. Yesterday, we had a shooting in Tulsa at a medical facility, and four people were killed. And so what, what I heard on a news program that bothered me so much, and why I wanted to speak a little bit tonight, was that you, you, you got the impression when they were talking about the Tulsa shooting, it was only four were killed. And, and that, that, that really bothered me, because is that where we've, where we've, where we are now? I'm sure the, the families of those four people aren't any less devastated, lives ruined and grieving, any less, because only four. And so I was really moved by, by that and disturbed by that. And of course, this is, the first week of June is, I believe, National Gun Violence Awareness Week, and you're supposed to wear orange, which I have on. Just because I think, I, I don't really, I, I mean, if people aren't aware of gun violence and mass shootings right now, then they never will be, because it has dominated our news, and it has devastated our citizens. As we sit and we look at the TV, and we see these images of ten-year-olds who love to play soccer, and love to play, want to be a police officer, and love playing with their baby brothers and sisters, and, and they're gone, and, and how devastated we are. And I just think that it's just sad that it's to the point where we're relieved that only four died today. And, you know, not much happened after Columbine, you know, on the national level, not much happened after Sandy Hook or Parkland. I'm hoping, as a result of this latest catastrophe in Texas, that some sort of reasonable national gun legislation will come forward. They are in discussion. And I'm, I'm very hopeful. You know, I'm, we're all Americans, I'm a very patriotic person, you know that. I'm a student of history and military history, and a patriotic American, I support the Constitution, I believe in the Constitution. The Second Amendment is part of the Constitution, and I support the, that amendment. However, I, I just want to read one, the, the, the Second Amendment is only twenty-seven words, it's one of our shortest, I think only the eighth is shorter. And it reads, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And I believe in that. But it has the word regulated in it. And so it could have just said, "A militia being necessary for the security of a free state," but it says a well-regulated. So I'm very hopeful, and I hope you share in my hope, because you and I, and Bill, we all marched in the Memorial Day Parade. And I was with Rosa, you were, State Rep. Davi Accarino was there, State Senator Paul Ciccarelli was there, Ciccarelli was there. And I was just walking and listening to people yelling out to Rosa, "Do something about these guns." And so I'm hopeful that something can be done at the national level. I know that there are issues, which I think you're referencing, you know, universal background checks, red flagging is, I think, will have bipartisan support, and perhaps even raising the age for owning these AR-15 type assault weapons. Those are the types of provisions that might be discussed. Now, I really understand the need to balance the rights spelled out in the Second Amendment. We must balance the rights of our law-abiding citizens who are hunters, or target shooters, or just own guns for protection. So I understand that there has to be a balance between protecting law-abiding citizens who own guns and have the right to own guns, with the need for some reasonable national gun legislation. And I'm, you know, it, it, in some, it's easier to buy an assault rifle than it is to get a driver's license. And that's hard for me to really understand. And so I had prepared a motion out of the frustration and shock of hearing this, only four died. And I'm going to read it, and I, I'm not going to make a formal motion, I just want you to hear it. In fact, I, I made copies to make it easier for you to follow along, if you can. And I just proposed this motion that the North Haven Board of Selectmen hereby recommends that our United States Congress, as soon as reasonably possible, take any and all appropriate action to effectuate national gun legislation in an effort to address current gun violence and mass shootings, but without undue infringement on the rights of law-abiding citizens. You need that balance. I think it's critical, or else nothing will happen. And I, I used, I chose every word in here very carefully, because I said in an effort to address current gun violence and mass shootings, because no legislation is going to prevent them completely. We can never do that. But I think that certain, and this doesn't advocate for any specific policies, it just says, "Let's try to do something." Because if we continue to do nothing, all we're doing is waiting for the next disaster and hoping it doesn't happen here.
So what we're doing here.
Yes.
Is we're, we're participating in gun violence recognition, and we're doing a proclamation, so like a lot of the other mayors are doing.
Oh, we are?
We're doing that, yes.
Okay. I actually have it here.
So we, we don't need to go through it, we're doing it, okay?
Oh, that's great.
So, and a lot of the mayors, my colleagues, are doing that.
I commend you for agreeing to do that.
We're doing that, so. But this board, ladies and gentlemen, we don't take on national incendiary issues. I'm doing my part, we recognize this is a problem, we're doing the proclamation to participate, like a lot of the other chief elected officials are doing. And so we'll be submitting that, I think, tomorrow, actually, or we already submitted it.
Well, I, I am not making a formal motion, but I wanted, in this format, this is the most watched meeting.
Right.
And I hope that you share some of my concerns.
We're participating with the proclamation in, in the program.
Right, well, that is, and that is very important, the, the proclamation for gun violence awareness. But we are aware, we need to do more than be aware. We need some action, we need reasonable action.
You know Connecticut's already done this.
Yes.
Connecticut has some of the strictest laws in the country.
Yes, in, in, after Sandy Hook, bipartisan support for some of the strictest gun laws, absolutely. And, but I think we need something at the national level.
Well, that's what's being worked on right now.
Yeah.
I saw the news broadcast, and there's a bipartisan committee that is trying to work out solutions. So.
Yeah.
We're doing our part here through participating with the recognition of this problem, and it's up to them to determine how they're going to do this.
Right. And again, first and foremost, I, I support the Second Amendment, it is part of our Constitution. But, you know, look at the First Amendment, which guarantees free speech. We regulate free speech. We have time, place, and manner regulations, we have libel and slander laws. Here in North Haven, we have an ordinance that limits decimal numbers, depending upon the time of day. So that is, in effect, a limitation on the volume of free speech. So just because you are advocating for reasonable regulation of a right, doesn't mean you're against that right. I support free speech, but I also support reasonable regulation. The, the classic time, place, and manner cases, Supreme Court cases are the, you can't, you know, scream fire in a, in a crowded theater. So those are the kinds of, of timely, time, place, and manner restrictions that have been put on, on freedom of speech, which is obviously one of our most cherished. So there are regulations of constitutional rights, and I think we need something at the national level. And I'm saying this only because I was just so distraught when the person that I heard last night talking about the Tulsa shooting was, was relieved that it was only four, and that was the final straw for me, and I just wanted, and I hope that you feel.
Well, that's wrong. For them to say only four, that's absolutely despicable.
Yeah, you know, and, and that is the sense, though, that I think a lot of people have, oh, only four, you know. So I, I am hopeful that, and I'm glad that you share my hope.
I am glad that there's bipartisan discussion.
Yeah, it has to be.
This government, this government, ladies and gentlemen, has been bipartisan for years. And so let's see how it plays out.
Yeah, and, and so that's all that I really wanted to say. And I think bipartisanship is key. We have to balance the rights of law-abiding citizens, first and foremost, but I think that we can do more to prevent some of the tragedies that have happened recently. And so I thank you for allowing me these few minutes to share that. I think that this topic is on a lot of people's minds, so thank you very much.
Okay, very good.
(inaudible) 69, Kimberly Circle. Just on a follow-up to that, I'm not, I'm not asking for any information tonight, but it would be, you know, there's a lot of talk when it's a school shooting, but it's no more devastating to lose your child in a nightclub when they're twenty years old, or in a supermarket, a child lost in a supermarket, or in church, or in the grocery store, or wherever. And we know these shootings are happening almost on a daily basis, to the point where ten people are killed and it's only in the news for a day. And so I guess I would like to know, maybe in the next Board of Selectment meeting, what locally is being done in terms of training of staff? Are there things being done to prepare for if and when a shooting happens in North Haven or in the local area? And just getting an idea of, of what our town is doing to prepare for, or prevent, through identifying people who are struggling and things like that. So, given what you're saying, I know you've talked about the school issue, but our kids are only in school for a short period of time, and there is the rest of their lives where there are other places. And our children are in school-aged, they're in their twenties, thirties, forties, fifties. And so I, I think in terms of this being a more global problem, it would be helpful to know what our government is doing, local government is doing to consider how our town prepares or tries to prevent outside of state and federal gun control laws. So just, it's my follow-up.
I can tell you right now, I'll tell you right now. So under this administration, I supported a SWAT team, and we've spent, we've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars down through the years in creating a SWAT team for the North Haven Police Department. And then I spearheaded a regional SWAT team, where we, we ended up in an alliance with four or five other municipalities. As part of that SWAT team, there's active shooter and training drills. These police officers are constantly training. As an example, about four years ago last month, there was an explosion on Middletown, on Maple Avenue. That was an example of all the training that came into play, all of the investments I made in that, they responded. And it was, and not only. And it was in not only our North Haven Police Department, but through the regional affiliations we've created with the FBI, Homeland Security, and other municipalities. So the SWAT team, not every municipality has that, we do. Now in terms of the mental health issue, we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars here, at least since I've been in office, on, on putting in counselors for mental health issues. We have a staff that deals with any mental health-related issues, and we brought in BH Care to give us the state-certified umbrella to deal with those individuals who have problems and they need, they need help. So we've done that. Those are the two things that we've done, and that's more than a lot of municipalities have done.
The other thing you might want to consider is, you know, when you're talking about see something, say something, is who, you know, some kind of guy, who do you call? You see something on Facebook, and it's not necessarily about calling someone out on Facebook, but if there's something concerning, who do you call? You call the police department? You call, you know, you know, what are the resources for, for, you know, if we're supposed to say something, you say something to who? Because that's, that's often a big, heavy issue as well.
So what we do on that is we have surveillance of social media. We look for, we look for, we look for behavior that may suggest violence, and we're constantly monitoring that. The Board of Ed does this also. In, in terms of if you see something, yes, call the police department, that's who we call. You call either non-emergency police or 911 if there's an issue. So we are doing that, there's surveillance of the social media. And you know, and we know as well as anyone, there are these clues that appear on social media prior to these tragedies, where you see this, this reckless dialogue that suggests that there may be some mental health issues, as an example. So that's another thing we do. SWAT, resources to help people emotionally who have mental health issues, we have an APRN who prescribes medication. We've done a lot here in the last eight or nine years, and the scrutinization of social media. That's what we're doing.
Right, I think that's what the, one of the red flag provision is all about, that they're considering in Washington, that I think does have bipartisan support, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed on that.
Yeah.
Because you, you read, oh, he, a shooter prior to the event, put this and that on social media, and you want to scream, whoa, 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 why didn't anybody do anything? So I think the, the red flag provisions that, at least I've read and that I've heard members of Congress comment on, would, would also help us, so. And I'm glad that we're doing it locally, I, I think it's great.
We can always get better, don't get me wrong, we're never satisfied.
Sure, yeah.
So, and that's why I think in this coming year, I've already just had discussions with the superintendent about what more we can do to ensure the safety of our children, and I will continue for as long as I'm here to reinvest into SWAT training with our police department. And that has been very, very effective. Because I can say this, if we didn't have that SWAT team and that training, all the investments that I made, that would have been a much more disastrous outcome over there. It was pretty bad, it was pretty bad as it ended up four years ago, so. Okay, very good, we covered a lot of good topics here tonight in terms of being provocative comments, and so I appreciate everyone's comments, thank you.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and we'll see you at the July meeting.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.